Go ahead and get the meeting started. Council, you please read out from closed session.
In public, council did meet in closed session prior to tonight's agenda to discuss three pending matters. Staff was given direction, but no reportable action was taken on any of the three.
Thank you. Daniel, you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and stay standing for the invocation.
(Inaudible) please stand. (Inaudible). I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Join me in a word of prayer, please. Lord, your word tells us that the fear of the Lord is the beginning of wisdom and the fear of the Lord is the beginning of life. And now, as we go into the session, Lord, we ask for wisdom upon your appointed leaders here. Would you help us to have a clear mind and a clear heart and to lead us closer to thee? We thank you for each and every single person who's gathered here. Help us with humility to engage you in one another now. We ask in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Dean Uker.
Here.
Daniel DeGraff.
Here.
Parks.
Here.
Vice Mayor Leo Zubor.
Here.
Mayor Mike Frasucha.
Present. So before I start out seeing more people than we normally see in the audience, I'm going to ask that during public discussion, you can talk about anything that's not on the agenda, but if there's an item on the actual agenda that you've seen is while you're here, I'm asking if you could please fill out a card. We have cards and pins at the end of the dais over there. If you can fill those out if you want to speak, name and address, and then we can turn them in to Tricia. This way, we know who's going to speak so we can kind of time things. And if you could do that maybe in the next 10 or 15 minutes would be helpful for us to gauge time. I'd appreciate it. Now, here is the public discussion, and it's not on the agenda that you would like to bring up. Please come up to the podium, state your name and address, and address the council. Seeing none. Approval of the minutes. We're going to take these all at one if anybody has in mind. Regular meeting of March 13th, workshop of March 27, and the special meeting of March 28.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second.
Oh, now we gotta do this?
Yeah, so we gotta do that. Who moved?
Oh, I did.
Okay.
I'm getting there.
Which one is it?
Okay.
Yours is second.
Yeah, I know my thing is...
This Jake's computer's not running.
I don't do a...
Is it the digital boardroom? Yeah. Okay, there we go.
Let's do a...
Give him a second.
Okay.
Yeah.
Bear with us. For those of you who just walked in, I had mentioned if you want to speak on something that's on the agenda, we have some cards over there if you don't mind filling them out so we can make sure that you get to speak.
Yeah, I hear it.
Okay.
I think it's...
Okay, thank you. Got that none. Okay, approval of the agenda as posted or amended.
Now, I have two items to pull from the consent calendar. Item 1.2G and 1.3D.
Okay, with that, do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make a motion. We approve the agenda as amended.
Second, yeah.
Okay. Okay, motion passes. Approval of the consent calendar is amended.
So moved.
Young kid. Okay, motion carries. Okay, we're going to pull off 1.2G, which is Aspen Survey Company, Inc. Bill.
Which project is this for? When I read... Is it for the Parkview Safe House to School?
No, this is for the CDBG handicap ramp and sidewalk project, including the senior center parking lot.
Oh, okay. All right, thank you.
Do we have a motion to approve that?
I'll move to approve.
Okay.
Second.
Motion passes 1.3D. Resolution of the City Council, adopt a list of projects funded by Senate Bill SB1.
I have two questions about this one. One, the amount of money we think we're going to get from SB1, that's not going to cover all four of those projects, is it?
No.
So we have a plan to get the rest of the money from someplace?
So those projects are included in our payment management plan. Those were approved as part of the street and road funding moving forward for the next five years. We need a list to be submitted to the state as part of SB1 to be eligible to receive those funds. So that's the estimated amount that we anticipate receiving, the $250. The remaining funds will be taken out of the current street and road fund balance.
So we're limited to spending SB1 money on those four projects?
No, that's not entirely true either. As long as it's an eligible project under the SB1 program, we can reallocate those funds as needed.
Okay, so this is just keeping us in line with the state for...
Exactly.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, do you have a motion to approve?
I'll move to approve.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, so that's the end of the consent calendar. Two, resolution. This resolution supports the Ripon Fire Protection District imposition of a special tax to continue to fund fire protection and emergency services. Do you want to... I asked this to put on and to support their efforts to place this on the ballot. Do you have anything else you'd like to mention?
Not really, Mr. Mayor. The counsel of the resolution is fairly straightforward. I know the district may be here and want to comment, and you might want to hear from them as well and then open it up for public discussion as well.
Okay. Chief, is there anything you'd like to say or would you like counsel to...
I'm here to offer...
Okay, okay. So counsel, any questions, comments that you'd like to ask Chief?
I don't think I have... I have a question for Mr. Turfstra. This resolution, as I read it, is supporting putting the measure before the voters, but it's not necessarily supporting the tax.
I think that's a fair way to read it.
Right.
Okay.
Correct.
I just wanted to make sure that I had that right.
Yeah, good question. So do we have a motion second?
Did you...
It's up.
Do you have a question?
Oh, is there anybody in the public that would like to make a comment on this? Sorry, I was asked to do that and I didn't. Seeing nobody, counsel?
I'll move to approve.
Second. I guess the camera would move. Too quick.
Okay, motion passes. 2B, this resolution urges the State of California to recognize that illegal immigration is a federal matter and authorizes the city attorney to join in amicus, carry a briefs in support of the federal government's legal challenge for the California Vise Act. I put this on the agenda because I have a conflict with my oath of office. My oath of office says that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the State of California. This law makes me conflict with that, and I cannot uphold my oath of office by allowing this to happen. And so what I wanted to do is I wanted to bring this to the council and merely have some third party decide what is the right thing, and we're going to go from there, whatever they decide it is. This mainly says that we want to go ahead and see this, go to court, and let the courts decide whether or not this is legal or not. And that's why I put it on the agenda. So with that, I'll ask if staff has anything to say.
Really not much to add to that.
Mr. Mayor, the two questions are, one, is this something that the council wants to weigh in on, it being a state and federal issue? And secondly, does the council have any questions or comments concerning the resolution that's in front of it? I'm happy to answer any questions you might have on the resolution, but it might be good to discuss also the role... This brings up sort of issues about the role of the council in these matters as well. So I'd open it up for council discussion at this point.
I'd like to say something if I may.
Okay. Daniel?
Well, as Mike stated, we all took an oath to defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California. And when the State of California passes a law without the voter's approval and tells us that we have to... Basically puts us in a tough spot between deciding whether or not we are going to follow state law or federal law. And it ties the hands of our police department and our law enforcement to be able to make the decisions that they feel necessary to keep our citizens safe. And I think all of us took an oath to the Constitution, and we all probably campaigned when we got elected by our citizens to make public safety a number one priority. And I think it's better for us to leave those decisions maybe up to our local law enforcement to help out where there... Where help may be needed. One of the things I want to clear up, and there's been conversations from some people about this, that we're basically going to tell through this resolution, tell our police department that they have to go enforce immigration law. And that's not what we're asking. They've never done that before, and that's not the intention of what we're doing here. So I want to make that clear to begin with. I guess for me, one of the examples that I would use for this is if the State of California decided to say we are no longer going to cooperate with the FBI, they're a federal law enforcement agency, and we have a murderer that came from outside of the state, came into our state, that's under FBI jurisdiction, but if the FBI, under California law, we are no longer able to work with them, would we release the murderer back onto our streets because we can't work with the FBI, we can't talk to the FBI anymore? And I think the clear answer is no. If we worked with any other federal agency, whether it be the EPA, the CDC, any other federal agency, if they came up with a law or a rule or one that's standing currently, if the State of California said, "We're not going to follow those laws, and we're going to allow whatever is going to impact our city, and we're just going to let it go," I think all of us would stand up and say that that's not okay. So I don't know why it makes any difference with... As it relates to immigration. So I think all of us should take a stand and take the position that we're not going to allow the State of California and a small group of elected politicians from a particular party tell us what laws we have to follow and how we're going to keep our community safe. So with that, I will make a motion that we pass this resolution as written and move forward with the process.
Okay, so we have a motion. If we have a second, we'll continue on with conversation.
I have a question.
Hold on, Daniel, please. Hold on for just a moment. Let us go through our motion and our votes. So we have a motion. I don't see a second to continue, so the motion dies.
Mr. Mayor, at this point, you can take additional comments from the council or you can open up...
Yeah, yeah, we will. We will. We've got speakers going. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
So Leo.
I understand what Councilman DeGraff is saying. My concern is whether or not this city council ought to get into a political argument, and at this point, that is exactly what this is. I don't see anything here that says it's an issue that's directly affecting our city at this point. I don't see anything here that says that we have anything to gain or lose by adopting this resolution. For me, this is something that a group of... And it's not a small group. It's all the politicians at the national and state level have gotten themselves into because they can't act like a bunch of responsible adults. And it's going to be resolved. There's already a lawsuit. There's two of them, and at some point, it will be resolved. And at that point, whether we've adopted this resolution or not, we're going to live by the results of that decision. Whether or not I'm on the council at that point, I have no idea. This doesn't move too fast. And for me, the issue is what do we do in the meantime when we have conflicting directions given to us? This resolution doesn't answer that question. This resolution says we're going to join a lawsuit, period. So what happens the first time somebody comes to town and our police officers, who are the ones that are going to be directly affected by this, are put in that situation? What do they do? And for me, that's what this resolution ought to be about. If we believe that the federal law is the law we're going to follow, then that's what we ought to say. And at the point that our police officers are put in the position of either following it or disobeying it, I think that's what this council ought to have the courage to sit here and say, "This is what you do." So for me, this resolution ought to be changed, and there ought to be a paragraph down there that says, "At the point that our staff or law enforcement or whatever are put in a position of having to enforce something, this is what they should consider." The law... The rest of this is, it's going to happen whether we adopt this resolution or not. We're going to find a result someday.
Anybody else? Thank you, Leo.
I actually would like to hear what the... The chief has to say about all this, his opinion, how... Because obviously, he's the one that's really got to deal with it.
Councilman Uker and honorable City Council, we actually have a couple of issues. This isn't the first time the State of California has imposed legislation along... Against the law enforcement, a set of rules or regulations that they had no way or thought process on how we're supposed to carry it out. This dates back to medicinal marijuana, the legalization of marijuana, and this is actually more recently the second part of legislation that they've enacted that kind of leaves law enforcement out there to dangle in the wind, for lack of a better term, and try to decipher how we're supposed to respond. Because we also took an oath to uphold the US Constitution and our state constitution. And it puts us in a very difficult situation. Before this legislation was enacted, there was no issues with the way the Ripon Police Department conducted business regards to immigration or illegal immigration. I would challenge anybody, since I've been here in the last 20 years, to identify an instance where the Ripon Police Department oiled up their bounds regarding dealing with illegal immigration, as we follow common sense and the laws that are presented before us. I say that there's three major issues with Senate Bill 54 that affect our local law enforcement agency. Not the questioning and determining whether or not somebody is illegal or legal immigrant in this city. The three items are the prohibition of law enforcement agencies from detaining a person on an immigration detainer or hold in all cases. So if there is a federal agency that puts a legal lawful detainer on someone, usually that is a criminal actor in some way or fashion, we are unable to act other than the current charges or case that we're investigating. That poses an issue. The second one, there prohibits law enforcement agency from providing personal information to ICE or Customs and Border Protection unless that information is publicly available. If I have a federal agency, a federal law enforcement agency calling me, asking me for particular information on a subject that I have pertinent information on that could create a hazardous or dangerous situation for law enforcement to act upon, I feel I should be able to relay that information. We should have the ability to relay pertinent information that prevents safety for everybody involved. Senate Bill 54 does not allow me to do that. I have to turn a blind eye or I have to keep my mouth closed regarding this type of situation. It's very troublematic for me. The third item prohibits law enforcement agencies from arresting or intentionally participating in arrests based on civil immigration warrants. And I would relate back to the situation I just mentioned. If we have a federal agency that comes into our community that is looking for a known criminal, and that criminal may have an ICE detainer or is wanted by our Customs and Border Protection, we are not allowed to participate. Now, when I say that, that's not something that we would go out and physically take somebody into custody, but if they ask us for to close down roads, to form perimeters, not only to protect the people from escaping the action from that federal agency, but it also protects our community from the action that's occurring within that perimeter, that's very troublematic for us. We're sworn to protect and serve, and our hands are tied when it comes to certain circumstances because of the Senate bill. So those are the three main things that I cite in Senate Bill 54 that causes issues for us. Not that we want to go out and identify people that are here illegally, and not that we want to make those arrests, but we do have a duty to form a public safety within our community. And unfortunately, those three items severely hamper that.
Thank you.
Can I add one more?
Sure, go ahead. I would just add, you know, along those lines, and I don't want to go back and forth, I don't even want to argue, but I think Chief just made the point that it really does affect our city, and it... We may not have a ton of immigration-related police matters, but the other thing, by joining in on the lawsuit, we are taking the stand and taking the position that we agree with it and that we're going to stand up for what we believe is right, and I think that's the appropriate thing to do. That's why I'm proposing that we support it. Thanks.
So California Senate Bill 54 effectively makes California sanctuary state by legalizing and standardizing statewide non-cooperative policies between California law enforcement agencies and federal immigration authorities, places elected individuals in conflict of our oath. I understand it may happen whether we get involved or not. I'm used to standing up for what I believe and not just letting things happen. The supremacy clause and doctrine of preemption. What happens when state law conflicts with federal law? The answer relies on the doctrine known as federal preemption. The supremacy clause is a clause within Article VI of the US Constitution, which dictates that federal law is the supreme law of the land. Clause 2 of Article VI is known as the supremacy clause. And this clause of the Constitution says that any federal laws that are made according to the Constitution are supreme laws. That means the state laws that go against federal law are not valid. They're illegal. We can't enforce them. What we're doing is not an ordinance, and I understand there may be some concern we're putting our police in a bad position. This is not an ordinance. The police will follow exactly the same rules till the lawsuit is finished. We will not tell them how to do their job and what to do with their job. What I'm saying is that the California legislators and governors cannot just make whatever laws they want and dictate we break laws. It's our responsibility to stand up for our citizens of Ripon and citizens of this state when we see things we consider wrong. We don't stand up and fight, I mean, in the courts. We might as well just let others run our lives and give out our freedoms. We all took oaths to uphold and defend the Constitution of the United States and bear true faith and allegiance to and against all enemies. So let me tell you what the oath says. "I do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, and that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and State of California, that I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, or that I will will and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter and during such time that I hold the office." And a majority of elected people have asked me to violate my oath of office, and so that's why I bring it up. So if there's nothing else from the council, we'll have some speakers, and I know, Daniel, you said you have a card and you didn't turn it in, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, so if you'd like to come up and speak, and I will...
That's fine.
No, I'm not looking at you. I'm just looking your way. Okay, what we'll do is we're going to give you three minutes, Daniel. Come up here. You can give it to Tricia. You come to the podium, please. We'll give you three minutes. There'll be a clock ticking down. You'll see orange at 30 seconds, and then big loud noise at about five seconds after the three minutes.
I need a hearing aid. I'm sorry.
What?
Okay. I'm Daniel Trotter, Orange Avenue, 428. I do support the federal government, however, unless they are wrong. And I truly believe that they are wrong for the various reasons. They advocated their duty to negotiate, to regulate immigration years ago, should have been a guest worker program, and they denied and didn't do that, and they still haven't done... Haven't, you know, worked on this problem of immigration. They failed to act, and they continue to do so. They turned a blind eye when they needed... When the farmers needed workers, et cetera, service industry needed workers, and some manufacturing needed workers, they needed low-wage workers, but they didn't do anything. It's important now to have low-wage workers, but instead of having them, nobody wants to work for low wages. In order to have a living, you have to make what? $200 and... No, $200, right. $26 an hour. And most people will not work in the jobs that they will do. These people, and this is for various reasons, they haven't made a ruling on this, but these people are escaping violence and poverty. The government has not invested in infrastructure. Some of the jobs could be, you know, them. That could be a solution like the WPA. If all illegal immigrants were rounded up, we would have a labor shortage. And who would pick the fruit? Who would prune the trees? Who would irrigate, et cetera, et cetera? Who would clean the toilets in the hotels? That's one job I certainly wouldn't want. We have people, but who would work? And immigrants have become scapegoats for us. And how righteous can we be when we killed the Native Americans for pity's sake? We have that on our conscience. Now, do we uphold the letter of the law or the spirit of the law? Negligence caused the problem. Hurting families will not solve it. We have 13 to 14 churches in town. We all really enjoy singing "Amazing Grace." I come down on the side of grace. I hope that we're not known as a legalistic city. I hope that we are known as a fill... A grace-filled community. Thank you so much for letting me speak.
Thank you, Daniel. Appreciate it. Let me just clarify a couple of things. You're right, if we don't like the federal law, we got to change the law, but people need to abide by the law because it is... need to abide by the law because it is the law, number one. Number two, this has to do with felons. It has nothing to do with just immigration, so let me leave it at that. Martin Monkiewicz?
My name is Martin Monkiewicz. I live at 115 Segal Court. You know, I was trying to put my thoughts together as I was sitting down there. You know, I was watching MSNBC earlier, and they're talking about the rule of the law and how important the rule of the law in our land is. And I guess I'm a firm believer that in the federal, in immigration, that the federal law is the rule of the land, the law of the land. I am very empathetic to the situation we've put a lot of people in, but I also believe that even though our immigration system may not be perfect and has a lot of work to be done, it doesn't mean we should just give it up. I get very nervous. I moved to Ripon because of how safe it is. I get very nervous that our police cannot work with other entities to make it safer. I was very encouraged in 2015 when our president, for example, passed a law that said, hey, the different agencies can share information to make everyone safer in America. I guess my fear is the SB 54 and the Trust Act are making it so that rather than sharing information, and we're living in the great information age, that we are siloing people and preventing that ability to share that information. I do not want to sit there and try to see 11 million people sent back. But at the same time, for me to think that a felon, an illegal immigrant felon, is living in the house a door down or two doors down from me, and our local police can't do anything, and we have to go get them at their home rather than when they're at jail or some other place where we can safely apprehend them, makes me very nervous as a citizen living in Ripon. So I guess, I understand we're not going to change what the police are doing, but at the same time, I think taking a stand and sending the message that this is not what we believe in, I think is a powerful statement. When Escondido made that statement a while ago, I thought that was an extremely powerful statement to say, hey, we're going too far as a state. We need to protect our citizens that live here. We need to protect the people that are here. How do we best do that? And by letting people back out and then apprehending them, I truly do not believe is the best way to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
I want to compliment the council for bringing this resolution before this body and to have an opportunity for the citizens of this community to discuss this issue. This is a complex issue, and many, if not most of us, have direct knowledge of people who are in this country illegally. We're not talking about those people. Most of those people, and I know many of them, are good folks with solid families who work hard. That's not what we're talking about tonight. We're talking about people who are known felons. The police chief identified three areas where there is direct conflict with his ability to do his job, and that should be a concern to all people of this city. I know the council, every person here, is intimately aware of their duty to do their best to protect the citizens of Ripon. And by the State of California introducing this conflict, it clearly jeopardizes law enforcement's ability to do their job. We're not a bunch of nativists. We're not a bunch of people who just want to kick anyone who doesn't look like us out of the country. I get very tired of that argument. The mayor's grandparents came from out of the United States and immigrated here legally. I believe the city's attorney's father immigrated to the United States. All of us welcome people from outside the United States. We welcome legal immigrants. It is part of our heritage and something that we will continue to embrace as citizens of the United States. What we don't welcome is a state or cities or counties essentially taking the law unto themselves. Immigration is clearly a federal matter. We are not an open-border country or an open-border state, as much as some people in Sacramento would apparently like to see that be the case. That is not the case. And as I said, I am just troubled by the conflicts that have been introduced due to the actions of the legislature and the governor in Sacramento. So thank you to the council for considering this matter. I appreciate that the city of Ripon may stand with other cities and counties in California who have also chosen to say, we will abide by federal law on immigration matters. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. So before we can continue, Dan, we need you over here. Okay, we have one more speaker, but then I'm going to open it up. There's other people that may not have wanted to grab a card but had some thoughts afterwards. So Cooper Condit from the Assemblyman Flores office.
Thanks, council. It's an honor and privilege to be here on behalf of your Assemblyman Heath Flora. September of last year, the 15th, this passed the State Assembly, 51 to 26. Assemblyman Flora was one of the 26 assembly members who voted against SB 54 for many of the reasons that Chief Ormandy stated. The Assemblyman has a background in fire service, and he knows the necessity of communication. You know, fire and police, you've got to communicate. Ambulance and fire, got to communicate. We can't have public safety organizations that don't have an open line of communication that's vital to our public safety. And I also wanted to add that Prop 187, some of you might remember, from 1994, was an immigration policy passed by the voters of California overwhelmingly. When California took its first step into immigration issues, the courts rejected it. So we could see what's going to happen in this legal process. We know what the courts are going to decide. We have no business meddling in federal rules and regulations. The Assemblyman wanted me to be here to express his support for the resolution, and thank you for your time, council.
Thank you, Mr. Condit. Let me also say I appreciate the Assembly of Floris' support, and we also had Congressman Denham help with the resolution as well, so he's in support of it. He's not here this evening because he's back in DC. So if anybody else in the audience would like to come up and say anything before I turn it back over to the council? Okay, thank you, everybody that spoke. Oh, sorry. Can you please, come on, come on up and state your name and address?
Thank you for letting me get up here. I was not prepared to do this. I was not even prepared to come here this evening. However, I think it is extremely important, first of all, I will say I live at 393 Cindy Drive here in Ripon, and I am an immigrant. I still speak fluent Dutch, so I have that experience in my life, and we had enormous opportunities here, and I have always been very, very proud to be a United States citizen, a naturalized citizen, because I think this is the land of promise, as it was for our family, our entire family. But when I hear some of the objections this evening, then I have to ask a simple question: what is democracy for? If we have to agree with the federal government, especially in its present form, then we might as well just have a dictatorship. And that's very scary because my parents came here as a result of what they experienced during World War II. My father was in a Nazi, one of the worst Nazi concentration camps for the last two and a half years of World War II, and was one of the few survivors. There was a mass movement of immigrants from Western Europe and all over because of that, as a result of that, okay? I don't want to see this country turn into another kind of state where we're not allowed to express our opinions and our feelings. And it frightens me when I hear all these so-called Christians with all these churches in this town, and we're supposed to be exalting Christianity, and yet we're... I don't understand where some people just see criminals as being immigrants or something. The thinking process somehow just escapes me, and the connection is not my experience. I pick prunes with the braceros and cut apricots with them, okay? There are some of the hardest-working people that do some of the grungiest jobs for next to nothing, and I think our agricultural community depends on their labor force. And so on the one hand, to say we have all these rules and regulations and we're going to go along with the federal government, and then go ahead and enforce just welcoming people in and supporting them to do the hard work, the hard labor, for less than the going wage, seems to me rather hypocritical. And I know, I don't want to be judgmental, but it bothers me, and I think that there are a lot of facets to this situation, this question, and this that I think we need to consider.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate that. Very well said. So anybody else have any comments to make about felony felons in this country? Come on.
Hi, my name is Janet Dyke. I had no intention of speaking, but just for clarification, I've been involved in farming and dairy business all my life, and I'm proud to say that we have employees that own rentals, so they are not receiving a low wage. They receive a fair wage, benefits, and so I do find offense to referring to farmworkers or laborers as receiving a small wage. I think the message with this resolution was not to tie the hands of our police department, but to make aware that we do have federal laws, and as abiding citizens as we all are, we're supposed to follow the law. And how we interpret that, there's many interpretations. I find this law protecting our students. There are many things that are happening on in the school districts, as you know, in many school districts, not just with the county or... Well, I'm not going to say the districts, but anyway, there are things happening in our school districts that are criminal, and some of these things need to be looked at, and if by God if there is someone that is illegal or non-illegal, that is legal, they should be arrested. Our children come first, and that's my fear. I have daughter-in-laws that are teachers that are looking into homeschool because there's no guarantee in some of these school districts that their children are going to come home safely, and that's a big concern of mine, and I'm sure it's a concern of all of yours as well in Ripon. But as being a shop owner, I see things, kids going down the street, so I'm a little concerned when I see cars going down fast, and you wonder what's going to happen, and, you know, if these people that are driving do have licenses because they're always... Whatever. But anyway, I wasn't going to speak, but I just felt compelled on the agricultural one, so that's it. So thanks.
Thank you very much. Anybody? Okay, I'm going to pause now because I missed a few hands earlier, so I'm going to wait. Anybody else? Going once, going twice. Okay, turn it back over to the council. Thank you all for participating.
I want to thank everybody for attending tonight. Normally, I don't think we've had this many people here in the last five years in one night, so, I mean, it's combined, yeah. So, I mean, it goes to show you what the passions of people are when it comes to this particular issue and how deeply people feel about it. So first and foremost, I would like to thank everybody out there for their professionalism tonight and their respect for the people that they live with, that their neighbors, their friends. Even if they might not, even if they might not agree with them, we're still listening here to everybody's opinion, whether we agree with it or not, and I think that is a great hallmark of a society that we can sit here and we can listen to one another even though we disagree and still be cordial to one another and still respect other people's opinions. So I want to thank everybody tonight for that. After sitting here and listening to everybody, I think one of the things that it's important to do and to focus on is just, is the... All we're trying to do here is making sure that we don't tie our police's hands when it comes to working with other law enforcement agencies. I think that, to me, when I look at this and I look at what we're trying to do, we've seen what's happened with AB 109. I believe that was the bill that was passed several years ago when the, with the continued, you know, decrease in the, in the ability of law enforcement to do their job in releasing felons early, and that's all we're trying to do here, is we're trying to make sure that we continue to keep our streets safe and that we continue to give law enforcement as many tools as they possibly can so that way the people of this town are safe. I mean, when I originally got on the council, that was my primary goal, was that I wanted to continue the great reputation this town has had and that's earned over the years of being proactive when it comes to this issue. So when I look at it, I've said it a couple of times, but I'll say it again, that all we're trying to do is just make sure our law enforcement and our chief have all the options and tools that they need.
Okay, we got, we got... Are you done, Jake?
I'm done.
Okay, we have another speaker, Mr. Zubor.
Taking the comment about not wanting to tie law enforcement's hands, I guess my question is, probably for Mr. Terpstra, if item number two towards the bottom of the first page, that says that the city council will comply with federal law. That doesn't tell what we're empowering our police to do, correct?
Yeah, it starts and stops with the council, of course, because the council has to give direction on policy and procedure, so we phrase it that way broadly for a reason, because it manifests itself through the police department and/or through administrative side of City Hall. So and since the council directs all of that, that's why we wrote it the way we wrote it.
So if we adopt this, Chief Ormandy has a couple of officers who are putting in that awkward position where they go right or left, does this language allow them to make the decision that we want them to make, which is it goes with the federal law rather than the state law?
I believe it does, and that's why we wrote it the way we wrote it.
Okay.
If the council would like it, we could, I'm sorry.
I was just going to say, I believe it does two things. One, it gives us, then the ability to make that decision, also gives us the ability to further that decision. If we wanted to create an ordinance that gave more direction, we could possibly do that.
Yeah, and that's what other cities are doing as well. They're looking at whether to do an ordinance that gets very specific. The problem is... The problem is right now, and the chief has outlined several ways in which there's inconsistencies and problems, it's only beginning to manifest itself. We don't know for sure as it, as this plays out, as litigation goes forward, how it's going to come out. And so there may be a need to come back and supplement this, or you need to come back with an ordinance. You know, we're going to have to, this is a fluid situation, I guess is what we're saying.
But if I, I want to be clear about something. We specifically did not do an ordinance because we didn't want to put the police department in that position to have to decide what to do and then potentially violating some law someplace. And so we specifically, because an ordinance they'd have to follow. This is a resolution of the council.
Well, I think, I think they will follow it. I think the distinction from our standpoint was we didn't want to have a legislative enactment. So you have state law, federal law, federal law, state law, and local law. Somebody alleging there's inconsistencies between them. So the resolution seemed to be the safer route to, as more of an expression of intent.
I can accept that, but I have a problem with the way this discussion just went in that it, it still puts all of the decision-making responsibility on them based on what, and that I don't, that's not fair.
Well, I don't know, when you're out in the field, that's who's out in the field. That's the.
But they got to know which guidelines that we expect them to follow and which guidelines we will defend. We can't sit here and say we think it ought to be, but that's not fair. That isn't. I'm sorry.
We're joining in the lawsuit to have the course decide. Are you going to do anything different, whether we pass this or not? No, seriously, I don't know.
No, the plan is not to change anything.
Exactly.
Yeah, the, the resolution really does, does, as it says at the bottom, three things. One is to recognize the, the illegal immigration and immigration policy is primarily and constitutionally a federal issue. Second, that where there is inconsistency, the county, the city council's intent is that we comply with federal law because it is, as Mr. Restusia has indicated, the supremacy clause seems pretty clear on this. The state of California through the legislature is taking a, playing a dangerous game of chicken with the federal government on this, and, and they've gotten their bluff called, as you can see in the litigation. With respect to the litigation, we're not joining the lawsuit in a technical sense. What we're doing is we're signing, we're agreeing that we will sign on to an applicable friend of the court brief. An amicus curiae brief is, just so we get to use Latin and charge more money, I guess, but amicus curiae brief is a friend of the court brief. You have to, you have to admit it occasionally, yeah.
It just costs us a hundred bucks.
So I, I'm not going to be sitting in my office writing a brief. What I'm going to be doing is reading a brief that, that is, will be prepared by other parties and to the litigation, including the federal government, and be saying that we agree with those and, and signing on to those in principle. But there's no original legal work. We're not a party of litigation. We're not going to be suing people ourselves. We're simply expressing our support for the side of the federal government over immigration, which is a federal issue, as we all know.
Well, Leo had made a comment earlier to add something to the, the part at the end. What, what would be wrong with adding what Leo had to add on there? Is there, would there be a problem with that?
I don't know. Something to do with the police department. I think specifically it left him out though.
That's where I still have a problem. I do not want Chief Ormandy and the officers, as he said, hanging in the wind. And I still haven't heard anything from this council that says we're not doing that.
I think there's probably more of an issue if you give them direction and it's in conflict with state law and.
What are we afraid of? That's my point. If we disagree with this, then do it. If not, forget it and wait and see what happens.
And we don't want to put those guys in the position. He's not going to do anything different. We're not going to force him to do any different. We're saying that we disagree, there's, we agree there's a conflict between federal and state, and we want the course to figure it out. That's all, that's all we're saying, right?
No, that's not what this resolution says.
Well, the federal law says, federal law right now, the Federal Immigration Responsibility Act says that nobody, no agency, state or federal government can enact, do an enactment that prohibits or prevents law enforcement from cooperating with ICE, with federal authorities on immigration. The state law comes in and undermines that. All we're saying in this resolution is we're going to continue to cooperate with federal authorities because federal law is supreme. That's, that, that in practice is what this means.
So if one of the three scenarios that the chief mentioned earlier this evening comes to pass in Ripon, they're to do what the federal law says, not what the state law says?
The federal law says that, that you can't prevent local agencies from cooperating with ICE. That's all we're saying. We will cooperate with ICE. We will cooperate with the federal government. And we won't take the, the state's approach of saying, frustrating that purpose. And the state thinks they're threading the needle with these laws and, and not fundamentally interfering with federal authorities. But I think what will be shown and what the chief demonstrated tonight is that in fact that is happening.
No, I, I understand that. I guess my only thing is if this thing gets adopted, I'm going to expect to see in the minutes what you just said.
Got it, guys?
It's been recorded.
Well, hold on. Dean, do you have more to say?
Well, I was just going to, it's already a motion on, I was just going to, if it would, it died.
It died, we didn't have a second.
Well, I was going to, okay.
I'll remake my motion to pass the resolution as ordered.
Okay, so that's, you moved. Do we have a second now?
Nobody has moved yet. Okay. All right, I'll, I'll second it then.
All votes have been cast. Five oh vote. Hold on, we need another one going. This one, this one's good as well. Don't go away. So I put this one on here as well. So I'm to blame. Resolution urges the state of California to recognize that illegal, la, 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 hold on. Excuse me. The resolution supports the Reducing Crime and Keeping California Safe Act of 2018. I'm going to start out with some, some comments on this first. What AB 109 did was it fixed three related, this here will fix real related problems created by recent laws that have threatened the public, safety of Californians and their children for violent criminals. The measure will reform the parole system to violate, violent felons are not released early from prison, strengthen oversight of post-release community supervision, and tighten penalties for violation of terms of post-release community supervision. Reform theft laws to restore accountability for serial thieves and organized thief rings, and expand DNA collection from persons convicted of drug, theft, and domestic violence-related crimes to solve violent crimes, violent crimes and exonerate the innocent. So what this resolution does is support putting on the ballot. And, and let me tell you what really jumped out at me. The, it could probably be explained better than me because I don't do a very job of explaining, obviously, but the people in Sacramento decided the way to clean out prisons is to just call something nonviolent, violent. Let me tell you what the law now says is nonviolent. Human trafficking of a child, abduction of minor for prostitution, rape, felony sexual penetration, I forget that one, drive-by shooting or shooting on foot of an inhabited dwelling or vehicle, felony domestic violence, felony assault with a deadly weapon. The list goes on. Those are not considered violent anymore. What we're saying is we'd like to put a resolution on the ballot that says those are, yes, those are violent acts. And if I read them all to you, you probably, your head would spin and you would be outraged, outraged by what this has to say. I'm suggesting we support putting the resolution on the ballot. That's what, and let, let the people of California decide. So with that, that's my opening remarks. Staff, do you have anything to add or should we go? Okay, so, okay, so we'll go to the council and then we'll go to the public comments. Anybody from the council wish to speak?
I have one thing.
Mr. Zuber.
I just want everybody to understand, this is a, an act that is being, they're soliciting signatures for. This is not something that the legislature is going to do or something else. There are people out there being paid, which is what happens, but they have to collect, I don't know, it's three hundred and something thousand signatures between now and some date for this to be on there. So in effect, by adopting this ordinance, what we're doing, I think, in my mind, is we're encouraging people to sign the petition. Whether or not it's ever going to be on the ballot is a, is a condition of that.
Correct.
So it, it's simply, there's some people that got some work to do in order for this to even make it to the November election.
Correct.
Thank you. Well said. Anybody else want to say anything? Comments?
I would just say, I think Leo summed it up pretty well right there. And what needs to happen and what we're trying to accomplish by having this as a resolution. And as Mike stated, some of the, the crimes that the state decided is no longer a violent crime is a, a pretty, pretty sad, really, in a, in a, you know, an effort to clear out the prisons. And I'm often skeptic, skeptical when you read the, the title of a bill and its name or a potential bill, and it's called the Reducing Crime and Keeping California Safe Act, but this is actually a good one. And, and, you know, I, I'm in support of it and I, I hope the community is as well. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Daniel. Anybody else? Well, before, anybody else on the council first?
Well, I just, it's hard for me to believe that somebody would actually come up with, I mean, it's appalling, you know, that, that there would actually be somebody that would be pushing to get something like that passed. You know what I mean?
Well, this, it's already passed. The legislator that says decent or nonviolent, we're trying to put on the ballot saying they are. But Leo's right, it's a process.
We, are we looking for a motion?
Well, if, does the public have anything to say? If, if anybody in the public would like to make a comment to this before we go to a motion, please come up. Can you please, Connie, can you please come to the podium so we, we need to get it on tape? Okay, why don't you go to the chief's mic? Go to the chief's mic, please.
I know they have this at, at MJC because my grandson, can you hear me?
Go ahead.
Okay, they have this same ballot at the colleges and the young people are signing it like crazy because they don't like it. And can we get the same ballot here at Ripon somewhere so that we can sign it here?
That's up to the people that do it. We're merely saying that we support going out and getting the signatures to put it on the ballot.
We have one here so that we can.
You can do anything you'd like to do, Connie.
We just can't have it here at City Hall.
We have it at Zmart or somewhere so that people in Ripon can sign it?
Somebody in Ripon can in fact be involved and go out and get signatures, yes. But we can't do it as a city. But you can. Connie, do me a favor, state your name, please, on the mic first for the record.
Connie Jorgensen.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Good question, though. Anybody else? Okay, so seeing nobody else, do we have a motion to accept this?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, do we have a second?
It was Dean. He's so quick on the draw over there.
Okay, we have a five oh vote. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Okay. Oh, wait a minute, we got to stick around. You do too.
We got, we got other ordinance.
Hey, that's my wife, buddy.
Dean, is this a personal slight against you?
Okay, the next, next item is D. Resolution of the city council, city of Ripon, ordnance, mandatory water conservation measures. Council member Yager has requested the city council discuss the future use of fountains.
Okay, this, I, I've been getting calls from several concerned citizens and I truly believe, you know, that our water shortage is gone and, and we have these three beautiful water fountains that are in Ripon that are basically not being used. And I believe it's time to turn them back on and I guess probably the best thing to do is direct this to poor old Ted over there, the water guy. And, and tell us where we're at and where, if, if I'm completely out of line here or not. And, but like I say, I, I have had several phone calls and people come to my office and, and talking about this and they're looking forward to the water flowing again.
Can I ask a question? Missland Park, Missland Fountain, Missland's Park.
Yeah, there's one on Mill, the one on Mill Joe and.
There's one over on Mill Joe.
Yeah. What is that, Ted? Mill Joe and what?
Yeah, Missland Fountain.
John Rus. Mill Joe and John Rus. Right. There's a small one on Mill Joe and John Rus.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah. Three total, right? Am I, am I wrong or right?
That's correct.
Three, right. So I guess let's, let Ted say his little two bits worth through the water.
Well, back several years ago, the city council, as part of their mandatory, mandatory regulations for the drought, did elect to turn off the city fountains. They have since modified the fountains with the interactive fountain, Missland Sports Park, to be operational during the summer, during three days a week, Saturday and Sunday and on Wednesday during, during the summer. The, the drought has been officially, the state has officially said the drought's over. We're, so it's really kind of up to the council to make the decision whether to turn the council or turn, turn the fountains back on.
Ted, can I ask you a question before we pass on, just so I, I know the, the stats? So the, some of the concern, I think, was that we had a lot of evaporation out of our fountains. And so that was kind of a concern that it was, it was a lot, especially Missland Park. Do you know what the evaporation, the daily evaporation is like, Missland Fountain and the other small one? I've got to believe they're minimal, but.
The, back, back during the drought, when the decision was made, we had started tracking the amount of water that was being used. It worked to be about 2,000 to 2,500, 2,500 gallons a day. That was one of the decisions, reasons that the council made the decision during, during the drought, the drought. When you compare that to what a residential, average residential use is during the summer, it's about 2.5 times the average, you know, home. So it, you know, it sounds like a lot, but in, in the big picture, it's, it's not, not too much.
But that's in total. How about each one? Because I thought it was like 2,000 gallons a day just for Missland Park.
That's, that's correct.
Okay, how about Missland Fountain?
We, we never did, we never did a study on that.
Okay.
They've, they've got to be way less, I suppose, because they're not, it's not getting on the concrete or spreading out, it's just a waterfall fountain.
You've got to remember, it's recycled.
Recirculated, but I've got a question. What is?
Oh, no, right.
Compared to the, like the overall daily use of the city, do you know what percentage it is?
I couldn't tell. It'd be.
I mean, it's, it doesn't even register on a, on a scientific calculator. It's going to be all zeros, I suppose, on the percentage. So, I mean, I think, I, I don't know how far we're going to go with this tonight or what we're going to propose, but if you are going to allow the, the city's fountains back on, I suppose we need to allow residential fountains to be turned off as well. So, but I, I mean, I think it's such a small number of evaporation. I mean, it sounds like a lot of water, but in the large scheme of things, it's very small. If it is, maybe the Missland Park, it's maybe some of it's running off the concrete and going back into the, I mean, some of the grass or something. I don't think it's all just evaporating, but maybe it is. But I, I just, it's such a small thing and it's a feature that a lot of people in the city enjoy, like to use, and it's sort of a waste as far as I'm concerned to just let them sit there, so.
Leo?
No, Leo's first. Put your thing.
No, 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 I was just going to say, I think when we originally did.
Hold on, let him go.
Oh, okay, go ahead. No, 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 I was just going to say, I think when we originally passed it, wasn't it merely a visual sign that the drought is here and we're doing everything that we can?
Yeah.
Well, my comment would be that the general perception on the part of everybody is that the state has said the drought's over. The state hasn't said that. What the state has said is we're taking away the restrictions that we put in place three or four years ago because of the drought. And in fact, over half the state has been determined to still be in drought, and that includes us. The, what, the last thing I read was that the snow reading in April was 52% of normal, which means we have half as much water. And if you talk to Mr. Wrightkirk and the people that run the irrigation districts, their point is if. point is if we go back to normal use, we'll be using all the water that we saved last year, and if there is a continuation next year, we'll be out of water. So the idea that the drought is over is not true. It's, it's reduced, but it's still here. And if last year was abnormal, which is what some people think, we'll be right back in it next year. I'm reluctant to make significant changes. I'm sorry, I am. I think that the three day a week stuff needs to stick around. We need to maintain this thing until we know for sure that we're out of this. Because we very well could be sitting here in October when this thing goes over and we've got nothing but notices that there's nothing left because we lived off of last year's water. So it may sound like not very much, but we turn those three on, I got four people that live within four blocks of me that all have fountains and they've all asked the same question. It's going to be awful hard to tell them no when we got ours running. There's more out there than we think.
You got to do both or.
That's right, it's either all or nothing, yeah.
Mr. Parks.
Unfortunately, I think this is going to be our new normal. Battling these types of conditions till the state, which I don't think that they ever will, comes up with a permanent, long-term solution. Unfortunately, I think that's just the way it is. I would love to get those fountains going again because I think they're a great feature to the city. I think they're visually appealing, I think they're very welcoming, I think it, it's a great benefit to have those to the city. It just creates an aesthetic appeal that helps set Ripon apart. Unfortunately, as Vice Mayor Zubor said, we're at 52%, you know? And if next year we're having it, you know, if in nine months we're having to turn around and say, all right, we, we've got to turn it off again and we've got to go back to these water restrictions, we really haven't gained any ground. You know, I mean, Ted, when was the last time they were ran? What was it, three years ago?
The Inter, the Interaction Fountain at Missland Sports Park was ran last summer.
Right, 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 but I'm talking about the other ones as well.
Oh, it's, it's been, I think, three or four years.
Yeah, so one thing I, I would suggest that we do is, and I don't know how long it would take to do this, Ted, you're a much better judge, judge of this than I would be, but is to get water running through them. Because I know if they do sit for however long it is, I, I don't know, then the, the entire system is just shot to figure out what exactly we're dealing with here. So, because if we turn them on and then nothing happens and we realize, oh, a pump is broken or something else is, is wrong with it, then, you know, then we're kind of, then we're looking at, you know, repairs there. So I think that we should keep them, um, we're operational, thank you very much, I was looking for the word. So that way, if hopefully, fingers crossed, the day does come where we can turn them on, then we're not having to, you know, wait another six months or a year, or whatever the timeframe is, to fix them and get them up and running again. So that is, that is something I, I would like to see done though.
Now, we, we have a speaker, but we also have a water expert in the audience that I don't know if he would like to say anything or not.
He's hiding in the back.
But I'm looking right at him. That could probably tell us a lot more about our water tables than we probably know, but let me make a, I want to make a comment first in case that gentleman would like to come up and speak. So if we were to turn on, let's say for an example, the Missland Fountain and the other fountain there on Mill Joe, but not, and then keep the Missland Fountain going the way it is, which is, I don't know, three times a week or something like that, I, I mean, I just got to believe that can't be that big of an impact. I mean, I get all, I get it all, I get what everybody said, but I'm just asking.
Yeah, but why turn the Mill Joe one on? It runs all the time and you get no benefit other than aesthetics out of it, if you're going to turn that one on.
Well, that's what I'm, that's, that's the whole question here, should we have them for aesthetics or not? Yeah, I'm just asking the question.
That's a difficult, difficult.
Okay, and I don't mean to put you in that box, you don't have to answer that, I just.
It's, it's, it, the fountains, in the big picture, don't, don't use that much water. It's more of a message to the public and I think that's what the council had addressed when they first implemented these requirements. There is issues, as Councilmember Parks mentioned, that by having them sit and, there is issues that we, that we have had with, with them being, not being operated. So in some ways, it's nice to have, have those things functional. Staff's just looking for direction which, which way the council wants to.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Pernice, please state your name and address and you're on the clock.
Kurt Pernice, 614 Avenue A. Thank you very much for addressing this issue and I want to say, first of all, I appreciate the water measures that the council did put in. I know some tough decisions, I think the city has, the residents in the city have gone a long way towards reducing our water. I do believe, however, that in the area of fountains in particular, the city went further than even the state mandated. Recirculating fountains are allowed by the state, there are many cities, including the city of Livermore, which has big fountains all over, they've run them consistently throughout the drought. I think to just send the message, we got the message. My whole backyard has been redone to a drip system as far as the grass goes. I've put in low-flow toilets, other people can put them in, low-flow toilets are going to save a lot more water than my fountain in the backyard. We've got grass out here in this roundabout, I suppose we can go put in artificial grass and say Public Works, unless it, does that have artificial already?
It is, yeah. You voted for it.
What's that?
You voted for it.
I voted for it, okay, yeah, okay, well, good. See, there you go, a little foresight. But anyways, I do appreciate, and I do think that the fountain there at Missland Park had some problems that were fixed since, since the initial decision the council made to shut it down, is that true, Ted?
Yes, we, we found some issues with it, which has reduced the, the amount of water.
And so I, you know, the, the fountains are aesthetic, I, I agree with you, Leo, they're, they are an aesthetic thing and I, you know, a lot of aesthetic things we have in this town. We have landscaping, we have flowers, we have things that require maintenance and water throughout the whole town. I think it's time to turn them on, especially since the state doesn't mandate it, since they were gifts to the city, voted for and supported by the community. I think that the amount of water they use is minimal. I don't see any reason to keep them off. Now, I understand that there may be concerns about residents, but once again, I mean, I have a fountain in my backyard, I have a drip system that goes to it, it also waters the grass, I guess it can't water inside my fountain, but it can water, I mean, all the plants and stuff like that. I'm not sure that that's accomplishing any more than, I think, you know, I, I think by changing my toilet, I saved three gallons per flush. That's more than the whole fountain in, in a week. So anyways, I hope that the, that the council will turn it on. I think the community deserves it. I appreciate though the water measures. I think you're right, Leo, about not going backwards, 100% right. But I think we're better, and Jake too, but I think we're better off now since you've put in restrictions already as a council. I hope that we keep some of the restrictions and some of the things, so.
Thanks, Kurt. So if I can just make a little introduction, Chuck Nguyen is the one I was referring to as being the expert for us and knows quite a bit about it. And he is, by the way, he's one of five people that run this county, he's one of our board supervisors and he lives in Ripon.
Thank you, Mayor. By the way, I don't practice it anymore, so my comments are strictly based upon my experience with the county and various water boards, commissions and committees that I, that I sit on. I won't weigh in on the, on the fountain issue because I think that's up for, obviously for you and, and Kurt to, to decide. But just to kind of put in perspective, one of the things that, that Councilmember Zubor talked about is, is we are in overdraft situation with our groundwater, which means that, that we're working very hard to come with, come up with a sustainable water, groundwater sustainability plan by, by January 31st of 2020. So we're not out of the woods by any stretch of the imagination, as you can tell, as opposed to the winter of 17. You know, it's not coming like it has. I would also say very quickly, to kind of put the, the water, the amount of water in perspective, when we had all the water, the atmospheric rivers in, in December, March, January, February, March of, of 17, we flushed, literally flushed through this county to the bay, 32.6 million acre feet of water. Now, to put that in perspective, we only send about four and a half million acre feet a year to the Central Valley and Southern California. So if we were able to store at least a third of that water, we'd be in much better shape. It's all about water, it's all about the abundance of water, which we have. And, and if you want to even expand it to the state of California, even in a drought year, we probably receive about 150 to 300 million acre feet of water, rainwater every year in this state. And so when you talk about, you know, the, the four and a half million, which, which Metropolitan Southern California is, is trying to increase, by which they just approved today to subsidize the twin tunnels, that's back on the table. So that's, that's another hurdle we need to get over. But, but I would offer this rather very quickly, you know, Ripon, when I represent the county and certainly the city of Ripon since I'm a resident, one of the things I always talk about is, is the forward thinking of certainly the councils and our Public Works Department and certainly our staff, because the purple pipe system has been a blessing in regards to, to maintaining our water, certainly our drinking water, et cetera. So there's a lot of opportunities out there and unfortunately, there's a lot of focus on, on, on the delta and certainly Southern California, but really, we have an abundance of water, we just don't have an infrastructure to either convey it or to store it for future use. And so when we get around to that, we'll be in better shape. So I'll leave you to the, to the fountain issue and, and you all can discuss it, but thanks, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Nguyen, appreciate it. Anybody else from the audience like to make any comments? Anybody on the council? Can you get up to the mic, please? Just because we got to get it on tape and your name and all that.
My name's Terry Foster, I live on 663 Mahlon Drive. And I was just, I bought my house because I love the atmosphere of Ripon and I moved here because it was safe and I have a family. So I moved away from a dangerous area and I moved here because I'm raising a family and I want to be safe. So Ripon, I guess it was like the 12th safest state in California or somewhere. It was what?
Tenth.
In tenth, yeah. And I'm like, that's a win-win, so. I was like, I got to find somewhere, I went to Pizza Plus and then the next day I know, like, I got to find a way to live here. So it took me a while, but I found a house and then, yeah, the fountains were on, I'm like, this is a beautiful area, everything's green, everybody takes care of their yard and, I don't know, it just makes it more comfortable. So without that, now all of a sudden it's like a pile of rocks every time I drive in, it's kind of like frustrating to me, so. It, I don't know, it seems like it would bring the real estate value up and everything else. I go to like Mantica and everything else, all their fountains are working, Dell Web's going on like crazy. And it's just weird that, you know, we're Ripon, it's supposed to be like, you know what I mean? And then we don't have nothing going on over here, it seems like, so, it's kind of a bummer. And then you see people like cleaning it all the time and that's kind of frustrating too, because why are you even cleaning it if you're never going to turn it on? Just drain the water out of the thing. But that's just me, so thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. Anybody else? Any else from the council? Okay.
I have something.
Yes, sir. Oh, shoot. There you are again, your face never moves.
Yes, Ted. My concern, and I think I said it already, but I'll say it again, my concern is that we don't slip backwards. Therefore, it would seem to me that if, if we want to try this, then we ought to have some way of making sure that this community keeps saving water in spite of the fact that the fountains are back on. And if they don't, then we shut it off. And Ted's got records of how much water was used every month for the last three years. And I guess on my part, I'm willing to give this a shot as long as that saving level, doesn't have to be exactly the same, because I realize it'll be a little more, but if we were to say, I don't know, like it's 95% or 90, some number that he gives us every month, and if it slips off, then we shut it down. People can use their stuff as long as they're responsible. We've worked on this for, what, two and a half years to get this thing going? And I just don't want to let it go because I don't think we're out of this, I really don't.
Is that a motion?
Well, I think you're right and I like your strategy, I think that's a very smart strategy. Daniel, you're next.
Yeah, I, I got to agree with Leo on this one too. I mean, it's, we're certainly not out of, out of the drought and not in a situation where we're out of concerns, I think Supervisor Nguyen made that pretty clear. Unfortunately, a lot of the, the issues with the water, as he stated, has nothing probably to do with how much fountain use we have. It has everything to do with the lack of storage in the state and it's, it's a state government issue and some regulations issues that the city of Ripon is not going to have a huge impact on. While it may, you know, give, give a, a bad impression to residents that we're out of the drought and that they can go back to, to using as much water as they want whenever they want, I think if we, we can make it clear that we are in an effort to beautify the city and bring back the quality of life that we're used to in the city, we can turn the fountains on, people can be responsible, just like Leo said, let, let the, let the citizens do their part to continue to conserve water and at the same time allow the city to, and the members of the community to turn on their fountains and, and see how it goes. So I don't know if we have the, well, if there's any more, anybody need to speak?
Well, I just, I just have a question.
Turn, turn on your mic.
Leo, what measure were you thinking of? What, what level?
Well.
I'm, I'm just trying to get a better idea. Oh, you're just going to get Ted, okay.
Do you think that those three fountains account for 5% of the water use in the city? Yeah. 2%? Well, but then we got to, we're going to have every Tom, Dick and Harry and Harriet in town wanting to turn theirs on too. And I don't, I don't want to fight that, we either go or we don't. I mean, for me, I'm comfortable with saying 95%. If we can let people run their fountains and we run ours and we stay at a, basically we're saving 95% of the water that we saved the last two years, I'm going to let this go. But if we drop down to like 80%, 70%, no, it's not worth it. We've lost, we will have lost everything that we've had for the last, as far as people's habits and everything else. That's what I'm afraid of.
Yeah, I agree.
So we're talking about the overall water usage of, of our power pool system that we report to the state. We, we are tracking, we track that, like I mentioned at each council meeting. This, this month or last month compared to the 2013, we were at 47% reduction.
Savings?
47%.
Savings?
Yeah, we had a lot of rain.
But, but I get, I get, I like Leo's point though, is, is okay, so we have a negative little bit then, but if everybody in the city does it, if it drops down to 80%, then people aren't being, you know, including me, I'm not going to say everybody, being irresponsible, then we're going to get into the same problem, overdrafting situation we're in.
We would, we would probably want to compare that to the 2013, establish, establish a baseline or any number. We are constantly monitoring the, the annual, the annual usage and currently we're at 20, 23%. I think the city council's goal was 30% way back when. So I, I don't, we'd have to establish a number, what's an acceptable number?
All right, Kevin, if we adopted whatever the rules are for watering and included that we would allow them to turn the fountains back on, let's say May 1st, could we come up with a number that you could tell us what, and we could tell the community what it's got to be between now and the end of this month?
We could come back with a, with a number, and that would, to us, Tom and I were just talking, that'd be a trigger for us to bring it back to the council. Because what gets hard sometimes is there are things that happen that are unusual, you know, weather, rain.
Right.
There's different factors, but we could have a trigger in there, that trigger just really means we bring it back to the council for a discussion about the fountains again.
Yeah. Well, then if there's no objection, what I would do is make a motion that we maintain the rules that we have in place, with the exception that effective May 1st, we will turn on our fountains and homeowners can turn theirs on, but there's going to be some sort of minimum amount of savings that has to occur in order for that to continue. for that to continue.
Okay. Hang on. Do your mover.
Oh.
Five oh vote, and we know what the rules are. You gotta keep yours off, though, Kurt. Thank you. Okay, ordinance is second reading and adoption. Ordinance approves the development agreement entered into between the city of Ripon and Mont Calera Farming Corporation, et cetera. Second reading and adoption.
I'll move to approve.
Motion carries five oh. Four A, nineteen eighteen nineteen policy goals and implementation plans. Staff recommends the city council consider approving the attached policy goals and implementation plan for fiscal year twenty eighteen nineteen.
Just real quick, what council has in front of you tonight is the results of the workshop we had on March twenty-seventh, where our staff had an opportunity to go through with the council all the accomplishments of this last year and some of the challenges facing the city going forward. There was a lot of discussion about, you know, what are some of the important policy goals and how are those goals gonna be implemented? So I've taken the discussion from that meeting, and I've incorporated it into what you have before you tonight, the twenty eighteen nineteen policy goals and implementation plan. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Speakers? Anybody?
I'll move that we approve the...
You need a motion?
Yeah, it's a discussion action. Oh, it's discussion.
We have a mover. We have a seconder.
Probably Dean.
Okay, thank you, Kevin. Four B, capital improvement program discussion and no action.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. So tonight, I just wanted to go over the capital improvement program report that you have in your agenda packet, and I've got a presentation here. Start going through that. So as you're aware, this capital improvement program that we go through every year, it's designed to provide that five-year outlook of our upcoming capital improvement projects with a focus on next fiscal year. It allows us to plan for land acquisition or environmental and construction requirements to deliver these projects. It's kind of a living document. It changes, it's used more of a planning tool in the budgeting process. And the projects are selected based on a list that you see there, providing vital services to the community such as water and wastewater, implementing the city's general master plans, the existing traffic patterns, and the associated improvements needed, the direction of the city council, and then any available funding that we have. So this is just a quick recap on the current projects that we are either working on, completed or are in construction on for year seventeen eighteen. Total's two point three nine million dollars worth of projects. Of that, one point six million is grant funded, with seven hundred and twenty-seven thousand from our local city funds. And then before I dive into the meat of the report, I did want to give council kind of an update with the, with our street and road fund balance and our street and road fund funded projects. If you recall, we did complete the pavement management plan back in twenty sixteen, and that's a plan that we'll be providing an update for every three years. The last one showed capital improvement projects over the next five years. We had four projects that at that time were outlined. This is the results of those, of the actual pavement management plan. You see that all the way, though, we didn't have a huge jump in the rating of our pavement condition. The overall index is improving, improving. This kind of tells us that the emphasis on preserving and maintaining our roads versus using those funds for complete restructs has been effective. Another factor that's kind of helping this number out is the requirement for the private developers to install pavers in all the private subdivisions. So these were those four projects that were outlined. There was no particular order, but you can see the River Road project up top. We had the Mahollen and California area project. There's the Orange and Palm area project, and then the Roxy Dennis and Greenie area And then this next slide is showing the current street and road financial projections. So we're kind of using this as we're programming the upcoming projects into the CIP. So the top half of that table shows the anticipated revenue that we'll receive from highway user tax, LTF, measured K, and now SB one, that will write around one point five million a year. The lower half shows the operating expenses, which are currently in the six hundred thousand dollar range. The second row from the bottom incorporates our capital improvement projects. So that last row, those are the planned capital improvement projects for those fiscal years. And you can see right now that our current balance is fairly high, so we've advanced some of the projects that we had in the pavement management plan. We anticipate completing those four projects within the next two fiscal years and then bringing projects forward in the subsequent years after that. And then as part of the, part of the operating expenses, we put this together, this is maybe a little hard to see, but this is kind of a snapshot of some of the street and road maintenance that we performed over the last year. All of the signs that you see in there are sign relocations. The red exclamation triangles show where we have done pothole repair. And then those blue balloons indicate where we've completed permanent asphalt repairs when we had water and sewer leaks. This is kind, this is half the town here, and this is, this is the other half. So we could provide kind of a more detailed snapshot to you guys.
What do the stop signs mean?
Those are actual locations where we installed new stop signs.
In one year?
Yeah, yeah.
New stop signs are existing stop signs that need to be replaced.
Those are stop signs that needed to be replaced. Yeah, this is maintenance. I'm sorry.
I was gonna say, the police chief must add something to do with that. Stop sign tickets went up about two hundred percent.
They're temporary. They might take them down.
Is that the same for the no parking signs?
Yeah, the no parking, all of those are replacements.
Okay.
That's the work that our crew does.
Nobody's stopping. They're gonna catch us.
And then so, so moving on, just to the next fiscal year, these are the two projects that we are planning. Both of these, like I said before, these are included in the pavement management plan that we brought forward in twenty sixteen. It's the River Road overlay project and then the Mahollen and California area three-layer system. Both of those are a hundred percent funded through our street and road fund. And then kind of moving out of the street and roads, into the rest of the report, as we move forward with the capital improvement program, we evaluate the population. It helps us plan for the expansion of our water supply and sewer capacity serving the city. Since we've recently adopted the three percent back on growth, it makes things a little easier. So this is just showing our three percent growth, what that's gonna look like in twenty twenty-two. And then we're then using that to look at the current state of our water supply. So this shows what our current supply is. The chart you see here, it shows what our water capacity was in twenty seventeen. That solid straight red line at the top, that's the ten million gallons a day. This is the total water that we can produce right now. And then below that, that dashed red line, that's our firm capacity, so that's the capacity that we can produce if our largest well becomes inoperable. And that's right at seven point one million.
Is that a planned activity or a case of emergency?
That's just something you want to look at and judge when we're looking at installing new wells. You know, worst case scenario, if that well goes out, where are we at? Are we in trouble when you start, yeah, looking at installing new wells? That light gray line at the bottom shows the demand over the last three years for each of the given months. And those are, worst case, those are the, I guess, the worst day or the highest use day in that month. So it's a little conservative, but then that blue line projects out what that three percent growth means with relation to where we'll be. You could see that that, with that proposed line, we could potentially reach up to eight point seven, which is obviously well above our firm capacity, which shows us that we do need to look for this new well, which we are installing well-indeed. And then this next slide is similar to the water, just looking at the wastewater treatment facility, our influent flows versus our capacity. We're in pretty good condition right now. Even looking out to twenty twenty-two, we're well under what we could actually, we could actually treat. We could treat up to one point five in DOD a day, and then our permit capacity goes up to one point eight. So once we get close to that one point five, we'll have to look at implementing or look at installing another project to treat more sewers. And then this is, this is kind of a condensed version of that table two that you see in the report. This is just, I just wanted to show this to everyone here. Goes over, the far right shows the program year. So over the next five years, we've got fifteen projects with an estimated cost of three point three, thirteen point three million, five point eight million from grants, and then seven point five million in local funds. There are a couple of unfunded projects on this list. I've excluded those from the totals. We'll be seeking funding, and then we'll bring these back to council for approval prior to moving forward with those. And then this is just the focus on the next year's projects. So these are all the eighteen nineteen capital improvement projects. We've got a total of four point two million projects, one point five in local funds, and then two point six in outside funding. So this will, this all will take place next year. And then just jumping into some of the details of those, so from our Water Capital Enterprise Fund, we've got a well nineteen pump station. Tonight, we just awarded the well nineteen drilling of the well. Everything proves good with that. We'll move forward with installing the pump station out there, so the pump and motor, all the fiscal improvements around that area, and then the well twelve modifications. So we're currently working on obtaining approval from the state to pump out of well twelve without impacting the plume that Ripon Farm Services has created out there. Once we do get those approvals and we know kind of where we can pump or what rate we can pump at, we'll move forward with installing those, that equipment. So this next one is our transportation funded projects. The River Road widening project widens River Road, pulling that maybe to the cornerstone subdivision. We actually anticipate getting our environmental clearance this week from Caltrans. That would allow us to put this project out to bid next month, and then hopefully awarding in July some time to move forward with that project. And then we're currently in the environmental phase with the Colony and Hoff Traffic Signal Project. Working with Caltrans on that. That's, that's really it, so.
The Colony Hoff Traffic Signal is gonna be done this year?
It's fiscal year.
Eighteen nineteen?
Eighteen nineteen, yeah.
Cool. Wow.
Yeah, that's really all I had, that was just kind of a summary of the report.
Any questions? Questions? Thank you, James. Appreciate it. Right. Right. Okay, thanks. Okay, C, award to landscape management services. Award the bid for landscape management services to Grover Landscape Services in the amount of one seventy-nine and change, unauthorized staff to proceed. Bet you, Kevin, who is that? Ken? Ted?
Take it. Excuse me. During the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen budget staffing discussions, the city council approved staff moving forward with contracting out the maintenance and landscape areas throughout Ripon with the goal of reallocating the public works staff currently working in these areas to the Parks Department. Staff has completed the process to request bids to maintain the six point seven five miles of landscaped areas, including all of the landscape maintenance districts, which are funded by an assessment collection of properties within these districts and all of the landscape areas within the public right of ways, which excluding Main Street, we didn't include that, which are funded by the street and road funds. The Public Works Department, with the assistance of the Engineering Department, prepared specifications for the landscape maintenance services. Two bids were received, which were opened on March twenty-eighth, two thousand eighteen. Those two were Grover Landscaping Services at a hundred and seventy-nine thousand, four hundred and twelve dollars, and Odyssey Landscaping Company for three hundred and fourteen thousand, five hundred and seventy-four dollars. If this contract is awarded to Grover Landscape Services, it would free up two full-time employees, which could be reallocated to the Parks Department. If we were to experience another recession as we did in two thousand eight, two thousand nine, we can renew the contract, not renew the contract, with Grover and city staff to take, take, take over the maintenance of these landscaped areas without having to lay any employees off like we did in previous recessions. Staff is recommending the city council approve the contract to Grover Landscaping Services in the amount of a hundred and seventy-nine thousand, four hundred and twelve dollars to maintain all of the areas listed in the specifications. Be more than happy to answer any questions.
Now, that's unbelievable, the difference in cost for the same work. Odyssey much is beautiful. Dean did you...
I guess my only concern would be, because I talked to a couple of landscape business people over the last couple of weeks. Are we, are you gonna still have control that the upkeep is gonna be par to what we as a city are trying to do, you know, are used to doing, you know what I mean? You know what I'm saying?
Yes, yes. We've spent quite a bit of time looking at the specifications, spelling out exactly what's required to meet or exceed those standards that the city currently have. So it's certainly gonna take some time monitoring, monitoring to make sure that they are performing, you know, to the specifications, but we believe that that's definitely manageable.
And, you know, one of the reasons why I asked, I didn't talk to some people, but then my personal yard service, those people, you know, they come in and do a good job at first, and then they slack off, and then you gotta be on them all the time, you know what I mean? Instead of, because they just don't do the proper job, you know what I mean? So I think that would be a concern that...
As for the, that was a concern when we went out to bid, because you don't know who you're gonna, who's gonna bid on the project. Grover Landscaping and Yano Policy, both are very reputable companies.
Yeah, I agree.
So we certainly will keep, keep on it to make sure that we're getting the service that we expect.
It's, you know, those numbers are actually rather shocking. I mean, you know what I mean?
Good lesson to pay for your house, it's so shocking.
Yeah. You said it's basically three, two people. So we look at the cost of that and what two people would cost, and you're not getting it, you're not getting it back because you're still paying those two people, but they figure out to do other things, so it's really not that much more than probably what those two people would cost.
It's pretty much a wash, yeah.
Okay, anybody else?
I have a comment. How is, do you have a feel for how the employees feel about this program?
We, we actually took it to the union back when we first started discussing this issue, just to make a... just to make sure that they, that they're okay with it, there's no issues. They didn't address any issues. The big issue was, is if you go out to bid, there was concern that we were going to lay them off, that we were going to be, you know, contracting it out in the blue of having them. That's not the case, and they were assured that that, that isn't going to happen, that there's employee, we won't be losing any employees. And with the benefit of, if we have another recession, we have to, we get rid of the landscape services, can remove people in, and we just spread ourselves thin like we are currently.
Since it's job protection, to this point, yeah.
That has been addressed.
Okay. You're good for this process.
Which is, that's a good thing.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, so we're looking for a motion to approve?
Probably to approve.
We have a motion, second? Hit word says second. There you go, Ted. Approved. D, redevelopment agency wind down process report. Staff will present a report on the wind down process for redevelopment, discussion, no action.
Thank you.
Ken?
Honorable counsel, sometime back, the council did ask just kind of for an update where we stood on, on the wind down for redevelopment. Basically, I won't go through the history of it, the staff report, Keddy can speak for herself, but in April of 2013, the successor agency, for the redevelopment agency here in Ripon, received what is called finding of completion from the Department of Finance. That essentially says that we're done with winding down the affairs of the redevelopment agency, with the exception of this paying enforceable obligation. So, we currently have bonds that we are obligated to pay, and that's essentially what we have on our obligation payment schedules that we put together on a yearly basis. I did list each of those bonds in the staff report, the balances of them, and the maturity dates of those bonds. So we would be pretty much filling out recognized obligation payment schedules and submitting those to the Department of Finance every year until, I think the last one is done in November of 2036. And with each of those bonds, we do have yearly administration fees for each of those bonds, as well as some disclosure reports that are on a five-year basis, kind of rotating basis for each one of those bonds. So those are, those are essentially what we have on the payment schedules. We go through those once a year. In December, we start compiling that information. Typically, the successor agency here looks at those or approves those in January, and the first of February, they have to be filed with the Department of Finance. So moving forward, starting this July, July 1, 2018, the city's, City of Ripon's Oversight Board, which is the board that, when you guys, as a successor agency, approved the obligation payment schedule, there was an oversight board that would look at that to make sure we were expeditiously winding down the affairs of the redevelopment agency. And so they would have to look at it as well, and pass a resolution before it got sent through the state. So, starting July 1, that board for Ripon will be resolved, and they will form one oversight board at the county level, that will oversee all the cities, or all the, all the dissolved redevelopment agencies within San Joaquin County. So they are actively trying to put together that board at the county, at the county level right now. They are fairly close to getting the last members assigned to it, and then now, once a year, we'll have to, obviously successor agency's obligations and requirements won't change, just to look at the payment schedule once a year, but we'll ship it up to the county oversight board for them to get the final approval before it gets sent off. So, to date, obviously, the city has been receiving about $250,000 per year for administrative allowance for winding down the affairs of the, of the agency, the former agency. This is pursuant to state law, ABX 126. They had a clause in there that talked about a percentage, based on your payment schedule, and then the minimum amount you would receive is 250,000. We're uncertain as to whether we will continue to receive that amount, or some lesser amount for administrative allowance moving forward. So, every year, I think, with Kevin does the budget, we don't plug the 250 in on that line item there, that we're going to be receiving that for administrative allowance, just because we're not certain that it's going to continue. The oversight board does have some discretion to reduce that $250,000 per year that, that an agency needs if they feel excessive for the amount of enforceable obligations that are, that a city is paying. And additionally, the State Department of Finance has been, also been commenting on this very issue regarding the amount of administrative allowance in comparison to what they consider our enforceable obligations are. So, they're looking at what our obligations are, and the timing that they think is involved in putting those together, and thinking that the 250 is excessive. So, they've been kind of writing letters saying, make sure you do your due diligence, and kind of urging the oversight board to look at that a little closer, and reduce that amount if they feel it's, if it's warranted. So, we're not sure how the county oversight board is going to handle that, if they're going to actually look at that and try to reduce that amount. Before, obviously, the redevelopment agency was dissolved, the RDA did loan 3.3 million to the Park and Rex Capital Fund in order to fund the construction of the Missland softball fields. To date, 1.2, roughly 1.25 million has been repaid, and the current outstanding balance is about 2.1 million. Of the 2.1 million balance, 1.6 million is considered bond proceeds that are due to the Ripon Successor Agency. So that 1.6 was money that we had bonded for, for doing redevelopment projects, and they are, they are to be utilized in accordance with the bond covenants. The remaining 400, or roughly 500,496 is due to the state of California at some point, as we're paying back that loan. Lastly, staff is exploring the feasibility of filing what is called a last and final recognized obligation payment schedule. This allows the jurisdiction to list all of their outstanding obligations, until they are completely paid off on one final draw, so you kind of spell that out for the whole period of time that you would have payments. Eliminating, essentially eliminating the need for yearly approvals by the successor agency, and yearly approvals by the oversight board. Before proceeding down this path, though, we want to ensure that any change is necessary, such as bond disclosure reports and administrative fees that are charged, can be adjusted if required. We already have seen those go up over the years slightly, as, as the cost for the, some of those reports go up a little bit. So we want to make sure that we can adjust those as necessary, so we're not falling behind, and, and the city actually eating some of that cost. So that's the wind down process in a nutshell, and I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
No questions. Thanks, Ken, appreciate it. Okay. Very nice. Recycling Center Regulations, Al Gore Report, out of state of California, requirements related to recycling centers being affiliated with grocery shops. Ah-ha, that's what we were talking about. Thanks, Ted.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Recently, the Save More Shopping Center property was sold to an out-of-state investor, and the new property owner didn't renew the lease on the company providing the CRV redemption service located at the site. CRV's redemption center is where you can bring your aluminum cans, plastic bottles, glass, glass bottles for getting the nickel back for each, each container. The council members who were asked if we just research and come back with the, the requirements that are required by the shopping centers. And we found that the shopping centers are in fact required to ensure that a redemption center is located within a half mile from the store, or they provide an in-store redemption service, or the store can be fined $100 per day. The, there is a process after, after the recycle center moves out of the, moves out of the area, is not in the zone, they've got approximately 90 days to ensure that another, another business has come in, or else they can, the state can start finding, finding them, or they can ask for an exemption to the process. We did have some good news last week. Our planning department received a site plan application for a new recycling service, a company called Claris is a recycling company, that's going to, is applying to put their facility in at the Jiminy Club truck stop, which is just adjacent to the Save More, which will give our residents a place to, to redem, redemption for their, for their CRV or their recyclers. So, it sounds like, you know, the issue's been handled, but there is a procedure that the state does require, and it does require the larger, the larger supermarkets or stores make these, meet these requirements. That's all we have, unless you have some questions.
At some point, not through this, there will be another recycling center out in that area.
Yes, okay. That's good. It's in the process of.
Being done, good. Thanks, Ted.
Thanks, Ted.
Very good. Okay, reports. Chief, anything addition you want to add?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, honorable city council, and to the members of the general public who stayed with us, I thank you for, because I actually have some good news, and I like to share good news. Through the, through year-to-date, as of this morning, our ECR Part 1 crimes are down 11% from last year, which is fantastic news, greatly to a reduction of deaths from motor vehicles. And we are in the third month of operation that we're conducting within the police department to help reduce those and other crimes that are occurring, and that'll continue for another three months. It'll be reevaluated at that time to determine whether we continue it or not, but good results so far. The second item is just a reminder, tomorrow, we have a promotional event at the police department. It'll be in the training, training room, our emergency operations center, and it's for our latest five promotions within the police department. So it'll be just a quick ceremony, probably about 10, 15 minutes, where those that are being promoted will be recognized. And then the last item is just information and update on the last two patrol vehicles that were purchased with the 2016-17 budget. We received those back from the upsetter late last week. They are, been released for patrol services as of today, so they'll be out on this road.
Great, thanks, Chief. Thanks, Chief. Ted, anything else?
Nothing.
Thank you, Ted. Kai, anything? Kai, nothing? Ken, any additional?
Yes, I do have a couple items. Just a really quick update, you did see on the agenda tonight, Meadow Brook Development Agreement for Second Reading and Adoption. The Meadow Wood Project, they went through their first reading and introduction, and we are still awaiting signatures from the property owners on that one before it'll come back in front of council for second reading and adoption on that one. So, when they actually get that back to us with the signatures and everything, it'll be on a, on a future agenda, we just don't know exactly when. The other one is the Vineyards Project, that's the one that's actively building out there by Missland Sports Park. They are, actually have a fairly aggressive schedule, they're trying to get things done out there. There was some delays last year with the irrigation line not hitting the season to underground, or replace the pipe there, and then there's some other items that they had kind of ran into as they were doing some of the development out there. We actually worked with them a little bit on letting them start some of the houses in the project, and also, work, we continually to work with them on a, on a weekly basis, on meeting with them, on trying to make sure there's no kind of gotchas out there that are, that are going to hang them up. They do have a very aggressive schedule, they want to start, they actually want to sell some homes in the second quarter of this year, which would be ending June 30th. We have actually put them on Lurch, and James has sent them a letter stating as such that they will actually get no finals for their houses, any of the homes out there, until we have completely accepted the subdivision. So all the improvements need to be done and finalized and accepted by the city council prior to finaling any homes out there. So, just kind of wanted to get that on your guys' radar, because we have a feeling there's going to be some houses done, ready to be final, I believe are already sold, so you could actually have some people here, you know, kind of wanting council to let them move in when, when the entire project's not complete. So, that's just to give you a little bit of a heads up there. And then, Monday, we have, we do have one item on the planning commission meeting. We had a flurry of activity last year, then there was a little break, there wasn't as much, but we do have an item, one project, it's a wine bar that's going to be trying to locate in the downtown, located at 111 East Main Street, it's right next door to La Casuela, used to be a boutique shop, so they are, they're coming from the planning commission for approval on that. So, that'll be Monday night. Thank you. All of that.
Thanks, Ken. James, anything?
Yeah, I do have one thing. I do have one thing. The council found out, when staff found out last week about Caltrans and their northbound way of closure.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
So, we did, I have been in contact with the project coordinator and the resident engineer on the project. They, they've given me a tentative closure date, I think they're working on firming it up. They've told me May 1st, but there's nothing concrete there. So, that's what I have to date, so I'm trying to work with them on getting some notices out, working with them on signage, their detour routes, and things of that nature. So as soon as we find something out, more from them and their contractor, we'll send out their information.
But can you explain what the closure is? Because the original closure is you couldn't get into Ripon for the next three months.
Yeah, so.
For the paper purposes, can you kind of outline, you know, right now, the actual location?
Yeah, so the second alert that they've sent out, I think corrected, is the northbound on-ramp for, for northbound 99.
Those near the upcoming Starbucks, that one will be closed.
Correct.
But the on-ramp will be open, and the other one side will be.
Exactly.
Oh, gosh. Thanks, James. The council, nothing? Council, nothing? Kevin? Okay. Mr. Daniel?
Um, Ken, I know, you have a. Thank you, and I will. The first, both mayor's decision, I were not available to go to the economic development committee. Ken, if you have anything more at the ED meeting?
I actually was not able to attend either of my, I think Supervisor Winn is there, he might be able to.
Can you give us an update on the economic development committee?
We can.
Well, we can report next week, but, or next month, next council meeting. Anyhow, as usual, thank you to the members of the public here, and I think tonight was a perfect example of why it's important. We appreciate your feedback, we make our decisions based on public, you know, the feedback, and it has a big impact on the things that we decide on, so, and I appreciate you guys being here, and those of you that stuck it out, thank you for being here.
Jake, nothing to report? Nothing, Mr. Yuca.
I would just like to recognize the mayor and, for the first responder event that we had this weekend, even though he didn't recognize me at the situation. But, there was, I was really proud of our community, there was a, it was a wonderful turnout, I would have to say triple D.
Yeah, over 350 people.
Yeah, so, and then I just also wanted to recognize Chuck Winn, and I noticed, he must have knew that he was going to be talking about Water Day, because he had his purple shirt on, and he talked about the, you know, purple water pipes. Anybody else notice that?
No.
That's why we don't let Dean talk about it.
Thanks, Dean.
That's it, thank you, that's it.
Thanks, Mayor. To allay the mayor's and council mayor's concerns, there was an extremely positive report at the Chamber of Board meetings this morning about the last economic collapse committee. I'm glad we did that. It's getting a lot of, a lot of positive support from the business community, and I think it's going to be a good, a good tool for.
And I agree, and I think a lot of people are learning a lot of different things that are, that they didn't know before, so I appreciate us getting involved with that. And I just want to thank, and I just want to thank Councilman Yuca, who was at our event, but I didn't announce him because he didn't tell me he was there. It turned out very nice. I'm so proud of our first responders, our police, and our fire. Fire, we got a lot of, over 350 people showing up to show their social appreciation. Supervisor Winn also made a presentation, which I appreciate, thank you. And thank you all for sticking around, excuse me, usually empty, well, yeah, I know, usually empty at this time, so, I'm going to call the council meeting, the council meeting adjourned, and we're going to open to another meeting, so, that'll go quick, so you're not necessarily wrapped up, but thank you all so much. Okay, so do we need to, how do we get out of this?
Oh, my God, can't we just do it from memory?
Wait, how do you act, how do you act? Do a what?
Oh, it says close.
Already hit the gavel. Already hit the gavel. Already hit the gavel. So what's our damn password? What's our damn password?
It's T W four.
T W, T W four. Is it capital?
She better be.
She better be. E W. Wait a minute, one, two, three, four, five?
Yeah. Why do we have to, why do we have to shut out? No, because you're not officially here yet.
Yeah.
Only if you have to. One day, one day. You don't know what you're at.
Oh, yes, we do. Yes. Okay, we're going to call this meeting to order? Meeting to order? Roll call, please.
Director Dean Yooker?
Here.
Daniel Graff?
Here.
Vice Chairman Leo Zuber?
Here.
Mr. Microsup.
Present. Public discussion? Anybody in the audience want to talk? Okay, nothing? Approval of the minutes of successor agency, January 19th? January 19th? Oh, my goodness, great. You do? You do? I have no idea. I have no idea. Okay, looks like we all voted. Okay, approval of the consent calendar? The consent calendar?
Second. Second. Dean?
He was there.
Okay. Okay. Seeing nothing else? Seeing nothing else? Consent calendar, meaning adjourn. What's up, homie? What's up, homie?